Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 10th Webster Board of Education meeting. Would everyone please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a motion, please, to move out of executive session? Maria, second by Sue, all in favor? Thank you. Now, upon reviewing the agenda, we have a brief change where we'd like to bump up regular business before visitor's speaking time. We have many more individuals wishing to speak than originally signed up, and we also are going to get through the business portion relatively quickly. So can I have a motion, please, to amend the agenda? Linda, second by Maria, all in favor? About face. This recent headline sums it up. Communications between the New York State Department of Health, the CDC, and the SED, and ultimately, the existing executive order that is the defining authority regarding mask mandates, creates an untenable situation for everyone. We are in compliance with the governor's executive order. What are the risks if Webster CSD does not follow the New York State Department of Health guidance pertaining to indoor masking? An order could be forthcoming that shuts down all in-person learning, all activities involving Webster students, including graduation, proms, balls, concerts, awards, all ceremonies, all included. Another possible repercussion are monetary withholdings and excessive fines. Another is civil and criminal penalties as provided for by law. And finally, the New York State Education Department taking action against an administrator's license or the board of education members themselves. We have no choice but to follow the guidance issued Monday, June 7th, 2021, that requires indoor masking on school property. We anticipate an end to this pandemic and a return to more normal operations. However, we're not there yet. We will advocate, per advice from local legislators, for clear channels of communication, clear lines of authority, and local control where possible and applicable. Other legislative advice includes supporting legislation to curb the governor's authority and return autonomy to local districts as much as possible. Another challenge of the pandemic has been communication. We have a great opportunity before us to rethink and reevaluate how we connect with the community, how we solicit feedback, and how we move forward as one district working together with all of our students' best interests first and foremost in the work that we take on. We will be launching a new platform called Thought Exchange to help us create a path forward together. We will share more about the implementation of this new platform very soon. Finally, we need to remind ourselves of the commonality that we share. Despite everything that we have endured during this pandemic, as students, parents, volunteers, all of us, what has never wavered is the commitment of the senior leadership team, building-level leadership, and teachers, and for that, we are grateful. Thank you to principals and building leadership who are making sure our students are safe in learning, no matter what the guidance says. Thank you to teachers who have been innovative and creative in the delivery of instruction. Thank you to our students and families who have persevered. We recognize how hard this year has been and appreciate the efforts of everyone. Thank you to Central PTSA and the leadership team for their creativity, ingenuity, and commitment to keeping families and students engaged. At the end of the day, all we have is ourselves and how we decide to work together for the benefit of the students of this district. And moving on to the public comment portion, we will honor the amendment to our policy for the remainder of this year, which is this evening. We want to hear from the community, and we appreciate your comments. The board will not be responding to comments during this session, but please be assured that we are listening. Finally, we ask all individuals during their speaking time to model the conduct we expect from our students in school daily. Please be respectful of others in your words, conduct, and demeanor. We will observe the three-minute time limit this evening and allow those registered today as we adjourn to a workshop meeting later this evening. Thank you. And with that, I will give...turn over to Cindy Cushman, who will introduce the speakers this evening.
Brian Freeman.
Right, okay.
Business items.
To the business. Yes, I apologize. Thank you.
So we have three audit items this evening, first of which is an approval of estimated reserve transfers. We're doing our best guess, according to the auditors, to complete these before the end of the fiscal year. This is a practice that we are required to for our yearly audit. So the first up is what our estimated reserve transfers would be. So that is the first item. The second audit item is an internal audit that was recently completed for your approval that had no findings. This is on file with SED this week, and with the comm. controller, just needs board approval as well. And then finally, the third audit item is the New York State comm. controller came out several weeks ago and audited the tax cap calculation and found no findings. So that is the third and final audit. That letter is there for you as well for the board to approve.
Thank you. Are there any questions from anyone on the board? Would you like to see a separate motion for each of these items?
You could do them all at once.
Okay. Can we have a motion, please, then, to move forward with the estimated reserve transfers, the internal audit, and the Office of the State Controller memo regarding the tax levy limit? Moved by Mike, second by Janice, all in favor? Thank you. And with that, now I will turn it over to Cindy Cushman to announce the speakers this evening. Speaker is Jennifer Fonseca. Oh, sorry.
Who is that?
Jennifer Fonseca. And Jennifer, would you please state your name and address, please?
Start the clock yet, though. Jennifer Fonseca, 455 Forest Drive. My heart is heavy to see what a one-party socialist nation is doing to our schools. Yesterday, I listened to a teacher in Springfield, Missouri, addressing her board. You can say critical race theory is not in school, but it is. She stood up to advocate for a biracial student who was impacted by this teaching, as this child tried to commit suicide because of his guilt for being white. Is this the next level of emotional and psychological child abuse we are coming to here in Webster? How could this board, with our prior superintendent and assistant superintendent of instruction, usher in and approve this integrated, politically biased teaching? How did a program such as FIRE ever get approval without metrics or research proving it supports academic success and growth? Is this how Webster approves new programs? No data, no research. Funny that this evening, your workshop is on metrics and goal-setting. I believe the district and board must be held responsible and called to account for how they could, with good conscience, approve and set this political indoctrination into motion. I did review the FIRE curriculum. I looked at the resources publicly available. I looked for positive instructional resources. It comes down to this: There are none. The words of equity and diversity today is a facade. Webster has sold themselves to the teachings of Ibram K. Kendra and its radical thinking. So we know that CRT went into full force in 2019. All the parents supposedly received a letter from Carmen Gamina, who pushed this into our district. He has already pushed it in the professional development. He's already made all the teachers read books on it, and he has mandated that all the teachers infuse this and integrate it into the curriculum. "All staff must recognize," he says, "their role in disrupting the forces and actions that have historically resulted in inequitable treatment for students and families." That means talking about that it's your white that is wrong. Another example of unchecked power and authority given to Mr. Gamina by this board. Last summer, the Equity and Diversity Task Force tweeted through a district account encouraging BLM protests organized by a school club. We saw the outcomes of these protests countrywide: looting, destruction, assaults, killing of our police. In Webster...in Webster...they didn't go to jail. In Webster, protesters obstructed roads and entered neighborhoods to intimidate a public office figure. Is this the example of the behavior that you just stated about what we want to teach our students and that it is in our code of conduct? Teachers, I do not believe 100% of you are in favor of this or believe you are guilty of who we are as a nation because of whiteness. Stand up and fight for what is right. Parents, do what you need to do. Webster has clearly made the decision through biased agendas of Carmen Gamina, a certain group of teachers, administrators, the teachers' union, and board members. All the board members voted on this to take steps towards this evil. Quoting of Virginia teachers: Parents and students, do you want to be the victims or victors? Remember, Satan loses, God wins. Thank you.
She may not be here. Joe Miranda.
Thanks for keeping the Pledge of Allegiance in the school. Mine's going to be about a little over four minutes. I apologize, but I've never done this before, so I know you guys will bear with me. Good evening, school board. Good evening, parents. My name is Joe Miranda, Jr. I'm a Webster resident and former teacher. My two children graduated from Thomas High School. Little history: my parents successfully brought me up to be colorblind in home, social, and work-life. Firmly entrenched in my constitution is the famous quote from Martin Luther King: "I have a dream that my four children will one day live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character." The Webster School Board members are parents and taxpayers elected by Webster residents. Over the years, we have thought of you as advocates for our children. The negative cancel culture has permeated our society so much that after a tumultuous 2020, motive and attention are highly and rightfully suspect. The following is my version of a possible speech the Webster School Board as a whole would make to parents, only if they tried to be honest and communicative. You'll see how difficult it is for them to pick up on some of the misspeaks. We know that all of you were elected by us to represent the indoctrination...we mean education. Your child receives, and be transparent about it. After all, they are the future. But a few years ago, we started to incorporate an agenda, which has changed from our original mission to fulfilling the radical and political requirements of the higher-ups at state and DC so sorry. We'd like to tell you more about these changes, but we can't, mainly because the higher-ups told us she wouldn't understand and might even thwart our efforts to gently but firmly jam them down your collective throats. So basically, since the May 2020 tragic death of George Floyd, Jr., followed by rioting, loss of life, property, our bosses...oh, that's no longer you guys, sorry, seized the opportunity to placate the squeaky wheel and pad their votes. They thought that since the country was in great divide, they were better than halfway to their dream, and voila, the resuscitation of the once-dead Marxist social agenda. No discussion necessary. It's medicine, a long time coming, so open wide. And besides, they and the teachers' union, lots of money and influence, you do understand, right? Said that since it's common knowledge that you already don't do a good job bringing up your children, you know, holding family dear, traditions, love of country, respect for law enforcement, the dignity of working, making a living, providing love with apple pie and pumpkin lattes, you have already caved and are ripe to us right under your noses to have us usurp your parental rights. We will be requesting that you don't ask too many questions and just plain obey. If we tell you that your voices and opinions count, you'll have a piece at the table. But what you'll soon learn is we were just BSing, and going forward, it'll be that skin color thing. We'll start with the glasses half-empty and inform you that our primary goal will be the atonement for the sins of your ancestors 150-plus years ago. We already have classified you as racist, and we have learned that labeling...and we 've learned that labeling anybody racist is the surefire way to get them to shut your cake hole. We call our program Diversity, Equity, Inclusion. Diversity, who can't be against that? Inclusion, the inclusion part, what child shouldn't be included? So far, you're on board. Wonderful. Now, that itsy-bitsy word in the middle, equity, do us a favor, because the spelling is so close to equality, please believe it's that, okay? No? Well, all right. Instead of everyone being equal, with the same opportunities available and working hard individually towards goals, equity means that no matter what, the outcome will be the same for all children. Quickly, here's how it works. Since we cannot bring the bottom up, we're going to drop the bar down, get this, for everyone. Your children now will be taught not how to think, but what to think. We started a few years ago by pulling the valedictoriums and salutatoriums for commencement. No more class rankings either. We may look into banning red ink, too traumatic, or pulling AP courses. Since we squeezed that by you, we believe that we'll be able to eventually endorse a full-blown critical race theory curriculum. Oops, did we say that? Until then, we'll be giving directives to staff to wing it. For the welfare of our bosses, we mean your children. Stay out of the way, be good little followers, wear your mask, shut your mouth, and comply. We are out to right the wrongs of your ancestors and cannot be stopped. Quick analogy: A domesticated elephant, food, water, shelter guaranteed, weighing in at between 12,000 and 15,000 pounds, can be led along with a string tied to one of those little bamboo garden poles, and we can tie them there and expect it to stay there until the owner-trainer comes to move it. This is definitely not the time to be led. Parents, guardians, grandparents, citizens. The trap has been set to have you aimlessly choose to go along to get along. We know this because no one desires to be called a racist. We think that back to Earth Day kickoff, April 22nd, 1970, the pundits of global warming and now climate change say we have less than 11 years, and it's over. I say, why try and have a big party? CRT and its myriad terms gaining a foothold will dwarf this crack. More than ever, you need to trust your parental instincts. If it looks like crap and smells like crap, you need not taste it. Only collectively...only collectively, we can make this proven failure of a social experiment go away. Thank you.
And next, Ashley Dastic.
Hi, I'm Ashley Dastic. I live at 572 Granger Circle. I want to start by thanking Mr. Neenan. I believe you're hearing our voices and truly trying to regain trust that has been lost within the Webster School community. We do appreciate the efforts that you've made this past week. However, there's a lot of work to be done. There's a lot of work to be done. This district needs transparency more than ever. We need to know the details of Mr. Gamina's departure. However, my main focus right now is children unmasked and possible forced vaccines. Once our children and families have a choice on masking, this group of parents will breathe a sigh of relief and move on to working together to encourage transparency and parent choice across issues within the schools. First and foremost, Mr. Neenan, you need to immediately make contact with all school principals in the district. No child should be sent home from school during these oppressively hot weeks for their inability to wear a mask. Many students and parents have taken a stand, and educating these children who have received subpar education since March 2020 should be your top priority. Make exceptions and accommodations where needed, and work to keep all students who want to be in school in the buildings until the last day of classes. This is a non-negotiable, and many understanding administrators and teachers in this district are making this work. So get everyone on the same page and get the students back in the building. I know you went out on a limb for us this weekend, but you folded so quickly. I know this was legally your only option. However, have you considered what legal ramifications will be in your lap when a student has a major health issue in a mask? Not to mention, there are and will be studies taking place in the short term and the long term that prove the damage that these lockdowns and forced masking did to our children's physical, mental, and social development. The data and science on these matters will be real. Anyone who was complicit in forcing unnecessary and not backed by science masks on children will know in their hearts the damage they caused by enforcing these rules, a result of a political game and nothing else. No data, no science. The CDC asked...the state asked for science from the CDC this week. They said if they didn't receive it, they would unmask our children. They did not, and you did not. I would think that this board, and you, Mr. Neenan, would want to think long and hard about how your decisions and inaction will weigh on your heart and conscience for years to come. To me, that will be a much bigger burden to bear than a slap on the wrist, a fine from the state, or risking a comfortable salary.
Next speaker, Lisa Summers.
My name is Lisa Summers, and I live at 659 Galian Drive. My husband, John, and I have been Webster residents for 12 years. Our two children are in the Webster School system, which has been nothing but a positive experience up until this point. I would consider myself to be pragmatic. I err on the side of caution until I can ascertain facts. Like most, at the beginning of the pandemic, I was alarmed about the information being reported on COVID-19. Even at the height of the pandemic, I needed to be certain I made sure what I was taking in was fact. It was difficult to sort that fact from fiction. I decided time was needed for more accurate information to become available, especially in regards to our children's health and their schooling. Many other concerned and practical parents of Webster gave the district the benefit of the doubt and time to put a plan of action in motion that would be in the best interest of our children's physical and mental health, but that also followed the science at that time. The children went virtual for the last three months of the 2020 school year while we waited. We allowed our kids to begin this current school year with a two-and-a-half-hour school day with only half their classmates while we waited. We masked and properly distanced our children while we waited. We waited for the vaccine to become available to those teachers who wanted to be vaccinated, as they were on top of the list and able to be vaccinated in January and February. We now know...we now know, per the CDC, those adults are now at a 94% effective immunity, so if they contract COVID, they will not be hospitalized. Their illness will be far less severe, with more of a likeness to a common cold. Per the Wall Street Journal, those adults in our schools who had COVID and chose not to be vaccinated are equally, if not more protected, from serious illness and are able to safely teach our children. As far as our children are concerned, according to the CDC COVID tracker, we now know less than 10%...that's less than 10% of all cases nationwide occurred in children. Also, according to the CDC, we now know children are less likely to develop any symptoms, and if they do, in most cases, it's far less severe. Several studies, according to the CDC, now show that SARS-CoV-2 transmission among students is relatively rare. Adolescents carry and spread at a much lower rate than adults. We are at a point now, a year and a half later from the start of this, where the facts are in and the district is no longer following the science. They are grossly allowing the government to overreach on protocol regarding our children. Why are our kids being held hostage in masks? What is the agenda of the New York State Board and the teachers' union? Are our kids being masked with provocation to remove masks if and only kids get vaccinated with a non-clinical trial, non-FDA-approved drugs? We do not co-parent with the government. We, the people, voted you in, and your actions need to reflect our voices. The Webster School District should be encouraging parents to do what is best for their children. It needs to be parents who decide, and the administrators and the teachers who accommodate. Regardless of each family's decision, all children, masked or unmasked, have the right to a free, appropriate, public education with no discrimination. I call on the board to fight, to lift mask restrictions permanently, to allow parents' flexibility to decide for their own families how they want to send their kids to school. If not, parents, I call on you. Be bold, be brave, send your sons and daughters, unmask, if that's what you think is best. Demand they get the education that our tax dollars pay for. These are our children. It should be our choice. If we don't push back now, I fear come fall, it will be mask or vax. And I'm letting the board know now...I'm letting the board know now, there will be a mass exodus of students, parents pulling their children from the public education. Parents will resist vaccination and masks, which will create more unrest within the district. You, the board, are supposed to be bipartisan in representing the people of this district, so why aren't you listening to parents giving us the right to choose? Why are our children, who are the least likely to catch, spread, and get severely sick from the virus, the last ones required to still be wearing the mask? If the board, you, won't fight for our kids, then, parents who agree with me, I strongly encourage you to rise up, voice your concerns to all levels of government, so they understand that it's our kids, our choice. We have more power than you think, so exercise it boldly for our children. Thank you.
Thank you for being the first person in this district in the last 400 days who has made a rational decision on behalf of our children. Sincerely, thank you. To some of us, it was common sense, but it took a lot of courage to make that decision. While it was reversed in 24 hours by Governor Cuomo, we finally know who has the power over our children. And that's a horrifying, horrifying reality, that a politician could tell our kids what to do and what not to do. This whole school year, we've been fighting for four key things: schools open full-time, no mask mandates, a way to opt out of the CRT curriculum, and, most importantly, medical freedom of choice versus the impending threat of max vaccine mandates. It's apparent that, at this point, vaccines are the endgame. Children are in the lowest-risk group, and in fact, they have zero chance of dying from COVID, even if they get infected with it. So why force vaccines on such a low-risk group? If all teachers wanted the vaccine, they have it, and if vaccines work, there's no reason to mandate vaccines for all children. Make it a choice. That's all we wanted, was a choice for everybody. A choice for in-classroom instruction versus remote. A choice for no masks on our kids. A choice to not have them be taught that by the color of their skin, they are racist and must be taught how to be anti-racist. A choice to decide what is injected into their little bodies. Why does it feel like the only choices that we have left at this point is to leave the state? That's the only way that we can protect our kids right now. And it's such a... And it's such an insane concept because it's under duress and under coercion. That's what people in socialist and communist countries do. They pack up and leave to get away from oppressive tyranny and any government control. That's what we're dealing with here, and that's not freedom. I told my kids that I would fight to the death to protect them from authoritarian medical mandates, and I meant it. I want to be very, very clear about this. This is the hill that I will die on, for my children, for anybody else here who wants a choice for their children. Can you guarantee me that these vaccines are 100% safe? No. Neither can Pfizer, neither can Moderna, neither can J&amp;J. Listen to these vaccine injuries already reported in teenagers. Bell's palsy, blood clots, myocarditis, pericarditis, blood vessel damage, clotting, internal bleeding, fatigue, headache, muscle pain, lymph node swelling, depression, anxiety, and suicidal ideation. Why would I take a risk of injecting my kids with something that could harm them in this way? And you want to require these vaccines in order to get them back in the classroom in the fall? It's insanity, and it's wrong. The risk of injury from the vaccine far outweighs the risk of infection from the virus itself. Why would any parent allow an experimental procedure to be injected into the arms of children when the risk of the disease is virtually zero? I said in my last Zoom speech that this is the worst public health policy in human history. And by not doing more to protect our children, you are all complicit participants in any and all damages and harm that are a result of vaccination. Do you want that to be your legacy and on your conscience? I know I wouldn't. So when a child has an adverse reaction to these experimental genetic solutions that has been required by you, the Department of Health, the governor, my final question is, who do we sue for damages? Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Kuhn. Hi, I just want to start with two thank yous. One is, I see you guys are letting people talk and you're not holding them three-minute rule, and I appreciate that. I don't speak in public. I quit college classes when I had to speak in public, so bear with me, please, and I thank you for listening. The second thank you is to the police officers here. Contrary to the popular belief of the media and everyone else, all cops are not bastards. Again, sorry. My name is Paul Kuhn. I live at 613 Old Woods Road. Our greatest hope of emerging from the division, the insane division that we see in our country today, is our youth. Their innocence, their hope, their optimism is our future. That is why I'm taking the time to speak today, and I'm literally shaking. The initiatives that are being pushed today across the country, supposedly to address diversity and inclusion, are making things worse, not better. The words sound great, but in reality, many of these efforts stem from political motivations and nothing else, and they are being implemented by activists and end up worsening the very things they aim to solve. The only thing they're doing is making the activists feel better. When I think about this issue, my mind often drifts to a very popular movie based on a true story titled Remember the Titans, and my leg is shaking. It is about the integration of our schools in Virginia in 1971. Denzel Washington has to unite a mixed-race football team during a time of great unrest and unbridled racism. By the way everybody acts today, we would think we're back in 1971. We're not. He does not, he does this through teaching young adults to reach out and learn about each other and by treating each other equally. It's just a movie, but it's a beautiful and hopeful movie, and every piece of the messaging is dead-on. There are poignant scenes where Denzel's character points out treating minorities differently, even when favorably as racist, is racist and detrimental to their lives. Treating people as victims rather than treating them as equals makes the person virtual signaling feel good, but it's more insulting and damaging than some ignorant person hurling slurs. So when you pander to people because of their skin color, it is way worse than when somebody uses the N-word. A hundred times worse. The latter can be ignored as ignorance, while the person hides behind virtue and the target feels pity, not proud. Let me share with you a few examples quickly that have happened within the last few months. I'll start with my first interaction with something from the new CRT or diversity-inclusion curriculum. Last year, a parent posted something from an assignment in Webster to Facebook that defined the word racism. It was defined as an act of prejudice by a white person against a person of color. I read the entire post, and I responded with a few sentences explaining that anybody can be racist. Any prejudice against anyone based on race is racist. I was greeted by a litany of insults and name-calling on Facebook and throughout the responses, but the first response I got floored me. The poster said simply, "Your hood is showing." This kind of nonsensical thought patterns don't just happen without nurturing. People feel good if they can claim a higher moral ground. Truth doesn't matter anymore. This is insanely dangerous, and it is learned behavior. It comes from all this anti-white, anti-U.S.A., 1619 Project nonsense and the hatred of cops. If adults are being swayed by this stuff so badly that logic and truth no longer matter, how do you think our children will react, and what will be their resulting mindset? If you keep telling all of our white children that they're racist, they will be. Will we produce healthy, proud, and happy children that thrive and succeed, or we create miserable people on both sides of the political spectrum? One side that believes they live in the worst country in the world, and the other side sees discussions as impossible because they'll be canceled? Sorry, I lost myself. I'm getting close here. Two days ago, a BLM protester, an adult man, and this is on YouTube, repeatedly called an Asian police officer an effing chink, over and over again. He said the man wasn't even from our country, and what the hell was he doing here? At that point, he was confronted by someone who told him he was being racist against the officer. The man said very vehemently, "Black people cannot be racist." That is what CRT teaches. Look at white fragility. Look at some of the stuff that's out on LinkedIn. You may not be teaching that in Webster, and I can see from all of your eyes as I watched you listen to us, that most of you care. I see a little bit of resentment, but I see that most of you care. Don't let that be your legacy. Don't be teaching our kids to be racist. I'm going to skip a little bit here because I'm going long, I know. Another popular slogan being thrown around here all the time is "Be less white." What exactly does that mean? The Smithsonian Institute put in an article that explained that rationality and hard work are racist because they reflect white values. Do you believe that? If you do, how can you possibly teach our children to be strong, successful, and to thrive in our country? It's patently absurd and an insult to minorities to say these are white traits. I haven't known that many African-Americans in my life, but the ones I have have been wonderful, wonderful people with deep moral values and a strong sense of work ethic. So if those are white traits, maybe we're just saying it to make us feel better. Is this what we want to teach our kids? Last paragraph, and thank you very much. I'm very nervous. Is this what we want to treat our kids? No. Skin color doesn't matter, and our kids already know this. How is calling people people of color any less racist than calling them colored people as I would hear my parents do? It's not. One is pity, and one is an insult. How about just seeing everyone as people? How about we stop trying to use our children for political gain, and rather than that, teach them math and science rather than how to be a political activist? I'm going to finish with something, and please, please don't take this as an attack, but I see these signs every single day as I walk through my neighborhood. You know the signs? There's like eight platitudes, and I find them very passive-aggressive. I'm sure many of you have these same signs in your yards, and they're basically saying, "Anybody that doesn't have this sign, you're a racist and you're a piece of shit." Well, I suggest you add one more platitude to those signs. People are people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Kevin Lafferty.
Thank you all so much for having me here. I'll try not to stumble too hard. Let me, I read all of this. I plan on sticking to three minutes, so allow me to just read what I have. I went through some revisions, but if you could just tolerate me, please, that would be awesome. Thank you so much. The Golden Knight, "Take back the Board of Education! Take it back!" What are these people doing? What are they thinking? They got to stand strong against Cuomo, the tyrant. Got to hold the bow. What are they doing? Crazy people. What's up with that? Squishy, spineless people. My, I have a couple of principles I don't bend on here in Webster. No BLM in Monroe County. It doesn't make sense. Take it back to the city. Bring it back to the city. No BLM. BLM has no place in Monroe County. And masks have no place on the children. Why are you bringing them into this? Oh, you crazy for that one. Masks, here's my thesis. Masks and CRT at the atomic level is a democratic socialist blitzkrieg to rid America of Judeo-Christian values and usher in a communist police state. That's what they want if we let them have it. Why masks are bad. Besides not being a medical device and children not being at risk, my main concern is how bothered the children actually so clearly are by the masks. In Spanish, the word for bother is molestar. The harmful anti-scientific mask movement paired with the burden of CRT is, in its simplest form, an attempt by child molesters to rape your children, hold on, I lost my spot, of their personal identity and self-respect. Only a child molester could defend masks and CRT for children. What possesses some of you? I guess we didn't get any counter protesters today, so generally speaking, what possesses some of you to continue to inflict the scienceless mask delusion and this violent BLM curriculum on your children and society? I will never understand. It's a burden on everyone. I think the mask cult is soulless, and that's why they want to force you to cover your face. They want to take your soul for themselves because they don't have one. I think that CPS should be called on parents who make children wear masks. Next topic. Why CRT is a burden. Besides stripping your child of their identity and self-respect, it is possibly more harmful at a cultural level than at a personal level. Allow me to explain through my personal experience. Back in September, the Democrat Chronicle posted an article with the headline, "Please Kill Daniel Prude." Over the course of the month of September, riots cost Rochester over $2 million. Businesses had to close down due to rioting and looting. People were hurt. A lot of people went to prison. Across the country, dozens of innocent people were injured very seriously at BLM protests. As it turns out, when the New York Attorney General concluded her report, it determined that the term homicide in context to Nadia Granger's medical report regarding Daniel's death does not imply that his death was caused by anybody else. It turns out that he did not die from being choked by police, yet the Democrat Chronicle wrote that headline. Let's jump forward to the last Board of Education meeting in Greece that I went to, and now I'm not allowed back at Greece. They gave me a trespass for going to Greece and protesting. I'm going back. The Democrat Chronicle wrote that headline. It's never been corrected. It's extremely harmful. Let me conclude by telling you why. Let's jump forward to the last BOE Education meeting in Greece. A social studies teacher from Arcadia is complaining to the Board of Education that they can't find source material for their CRT curriculum outside of the Democrat Chronicle and outside of the library regarding material from 1965. Will Cleveland, a reporter for the DNC, responded to this problem by stating that journalists must continue to pay those news sources if they expect to continue receiving headlines that work for the CRT courses. What I'm getting at is it doesn't matter whether it's true. They don't care. If they can't find the racism, they're going to create it. CRT even has a built-in system for diagnosing what they call misinformation or truthful sources that they deem threatening. Even now, the DNC is celebrating a man who attempted to kill a police officer. They are saying that he's a nice family man. This activism is rooted in the pathological desire to lash out against existence itself and punish everyone around them. For the tragedy of their own lives, they thoroughly enjoy the abuse. We must hold a united front, localize our power. We must hold this board. Masks will be defeated. BLM curriculum will be defeated. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin Agor.
All right. Can you hear me? No? Okay, I'll speak loud. All right. All right. Good evening. My name is Erin Agor. I'm a mother of five, two in the district currently. My two oldest children attend Schrader and Spry. I chose to homeschool my fifth grader this year. I usually leave the public speaking to my husband. Even the thought of speaking in public makes me break out in hives, but I really felt the need to speak to you all tonight. First, I want to start out by saying that we need the help of Superintendent Neenan and the Board of Education. We can't do this alone. We need you to fight with us and for us to have the right to choose what is best for our own families, specifically regarding masking and vaccinations. I want to give you, I want to give you a little background on me and my family. In December 2019, I was diagnosed with stage-three breast cancer. I went through the majority of 2020 going through cancer treatments. I started chemotherapy in February 2020, and my last treatment was May 19th of last year, right at the height of the pandemic. We knew little about COVID at the time, and everyone was scared, myself included, especially as an immunocompromised cancer patient. So what did I do? I stayed home. I protected myself. I never expected anyone to do anything to protect me or my family. I started radiation treatments in September, just as the school year was beginning. I chose to keep my kids in remote learning because I needed to keep myself as healthy and protected as possible. Did my daughters want to be remote? No, not even a little bit. They were very disappointed to not be in school with their friends. But I was not going to send my kids to school and tell other people to keep their kids away from mine, or wear a mask, or gloves, or even a hazmat suit to keep me safe. Never once did that thought cross my mind. I kept them home until I was in better health. In my particular situation, it wouldn't have been fair of me to expect everyone else to go out of their way to protect me. I have to do what I found necessary to keep myself safe. As an aside, I would like to acknowledge that the administration at both Schrader and Spry were very gracious to my family during a very difficult time, so I thank them for The point of this story is not to bring attention to myself in any way, but to share an example of the choices we make that will best suit the unique situations of our individual families. We are all different. We all have different circumstances. Therefore, we must be respectful of the fact that each and every family has different needs and will make their decisions accordingly. What is best for me is not always what's best for you and vice versa. Our individual liberties should not be stripped away and replaced with a communal agenda. That's not the way freedom works. I don't need to share the data with you. Many others have shared it with you. Many others have shared it with you over the course of the last few meetings. As you know, the risk of serious complications or death from COVID for children is almost zero. There is no reason to keep our children masked, no reason to force a vaccine on our kids. With the vaccine so readily available to those that want it, why are we so worried about what everyone else is or isn't doing? We all should retain the right to choose... We all should retain the right to choose what is best for ourselves and what is best for our children. We, as adults, should not be asking others, especially children, to take responsibility for our own health and well-being. So please, I'm begging you, fight for us. Fight with us. Fight New York State and Governor Cuomo for our right to choose what is in the best interest of our own children. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Baugh.
Hello, Christina Baugh. I'm a Webster resident. I think we had a lot of good points here. I don't need to talk about any of our concerns. I think you guys know what our concerns are. I think you guys hopefully agree with a lot of them. I know from some conversations, it seems to be the case. So that just leads us to the question of why are the decisions being made that are being made? So I just wanted to talk today. So my today is not about, it's not finger-pointing or providing statistics. I think we've had a good amount of that. It's about a path forward. And the only way to pave a path forward is through unity. Unity between the parents, the teachers, the board, and all of the districts in New York State. As it stands today, there is disunity, division. And I want to talk a little bit more on how we got here, because understanding how we got here will allow us to move from a place of division to a place of unity. First, I want to say that unity is not equivalent to uniformity. We do not all have to believe the same thing or act the same way. Unity is working towards, together, toward a common goal, and I think we can all agree that we have a common goal to ensure that our children are taken care of and that they are receiving the proper education they need and deserve. This year is the first year I've attended board meetings. I have to imagine that pre-COVID, the board meetings looked nothing like this. Why? Because there was a level of trust between the board and the parents... ...that the board would make decisions which were best for our children. Today, this trust has been severed. This could be the result of miscommunication, lack of communication, broken promises, speaking out of our emotions, confusion, deceitfulness, lack of transparency, differences in ideas on how to handle difficult situations. And if we are being real, these are all things that we are all guilty of at some time or another. Can we really know in advance how we will handle any pressure that is brought upon us until the pressure is actually on? So how do we address this problem? We put aside our own pride. And I want to repeat that. We put aside our own pride. And that's all of us. All of us. We humble ourselves knowing that we have one common goal, and with the understanding that in order to achieve it, we need to work together. We need to be transparent. If I do not know why another person is making a decision, whether it be due to the pressures of this world, or for fear of retaliation, or for fear of removal of support or funding, how can I understand, support that person, or even offer up help to stand against hindrances? We need transparency and open communication to solve problems. Pride will destroy us. As the years go on, our children will face challenges. They will face opposition. They already are. They will experience hurts and pains. They will... How will they know how to face those if we don't show them how to do that? We are the example. Do we fight each other, or do we unite and take a stand together in numbers? This is our time to show them. Yes, one person can make a difference, but imagine if there were 50, 100, 1,000, 10,000, all standing together with a common goal. How powerful that would be. We have all seen the numbers, the statistics. We all know that schools are a safe place to be, even without all of the COVID screening and testing and masking. We all know how our children have suffered, and we all know the dangers of continuing on with masking. It is not a secret. So my question is, how can we stand together in unity to achieve our goal and protect our children? I ask you to please be transparent in the why behind the decisions that are being made. Not just the because the guidelines say so, because they're guidelines, not law, by the way. But the real pressures that are tying your hands. Why? What are those? We need to know what is tying your hands from making decisions for our children. We want to help. Let us help, and let us unite. Divisiveness paralyzes progress. Unity powers progress. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes the business portion and the speaking portion of our meeting this evening. We definitely care about everything that everyone has to say. We actually do. And we are now adjourning into the workshop session. Excuse me. Would you help? Could you help him? Could you help him announce his name? Thank you.
My name is John. My name is John. And, um, what do I say? Okay. Okay. The masks make me sad. I wish we didn't have to wear them. Giving us one day without masks is like teasing a dog with dog treats. Also, every day when I get home, I feel sad and depressed. It feels as if one day of Corona has turned into days, weeks, months, and years. I refuse to wear a mask and will stand up to make those days not turn into decades. I never feel like I will be able to enjoy a day of school normally again without masks, social distancing, or any other mandates for Corona. I, John Bennett, as well as many other students, refuse to wear masks and will continue until all is fixed.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do I say my name first? Hi, my name's Lily, and the government said on Friday that we can take our masks off. On Monday, first... First of all, is all is COVID just going to leave in two days? Then the government said after Monday, we have to have our masks on. He's teasing us. I saw on, I saw so many faces on Monday. I was the happiest in like 400 days. After the government said we have to keep our masks on, I saw about 20 people having their masks off, even in kindergarten. And I'm in elementary school. These kids are fighting. The masks are making us suffocate. This has, this has been such a sad year, hard year. With these masks, it's so dangerous. We get to take our masks off at lunch at six feet apart. When we had AM and PM, we were six feet apart. Why can't we take off our masks at that time? Elementary kids are even fighting. Listen to them. No more masks. No, no, no.
Thank you very much. Can we have a motion to adjourn, please? Thank you so much. Everyone have a nice evening.